Presenters, please mute yourself until it's time for you to speak.
Yeah, but you're right. It's not very many.
That's L.
Good evening. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Pittsboro Board of Commissioners for Monday, March 27, 2023. So let us join together in a moment of silence to open the meeting. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell, would you lead us in the pledge?
Would everyone rise for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the freedom and liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Since we have a wonderful group of visitors with us tonight, let us sort of introduce ourselves about, for the purposes of introducing both the board and staff. So Jay Farrell, would you, would you start?
Certainly. Welcome everybody here tonight. My name is Jay Farrell, been on the board 11 years. Lifelong resident, so I pretty much know everybody here. Thank y'all for being here.
Okay.
Kyle Ship, on the last year of my first term, and appreciate seeing you all here tonight. Thanks for coming.
James Voez, second year, first term, and thanks for coming.
Good evening, I'm Cindy Perry, the mayor.
Pamela Baldwin, been commissioner since 2005. I really do enjoy it, and thank you all for coming.
We have Kent Jackson, who is serving as the interim town manager. Paul Messick, who is the town attorney. And then if staff would introduce themselves as they go down, thank you, Carrie, if you'll start.
Carrie Bailey, Town Clerk. Jamie Wilk, 22, and I'm the Mayor of the House. Molly Boyle, Planning Project Manager.
Roger Sawyer, Public Information Officer, Emergency Management Coordinator.
Very good, thank you. We have a real pleasure tonight. And so Theresa, were you and I going to do a tag team here on this, or?
Would you like me to start? Me, good evening, everyone. So while, while there's been much support for the revitalization efforts in downtown Pittsburgh, there's one person that stands a bit taller than the mass of positive momentum, and that person is Greg Stafford. Greg received the award for the Main Street Champion in recognition of his hard work over the years renovating several properties downtown, and for his support of the Downtown Pittsburgh Program. He received the award at the annual North Carolina Main Street Conference recently, and the award was given by NC, or excuse me, North Carolina Secretary of Commerce, Michelle Baker Sanders, and Assistant Secretary Kenny Flowers. I asked Greg to bring his medal tonight, so we could show it off. And I was happy to hear that the town wanted to recognize him locally as well. And with that, I will hand it over to Mayor Cindy Perry.
Thank you. Well, the, this resolution honoring you and recognizing you is, it's my pleasure to present it to you tonight. But I also have to admit that this is Women's History Month. And so we cannot forget the role that Paula Stafford has played in this. And, and when I say role, I mean, I remember Greg, when you came to us at the Second Bloom Shop, posed, poised there on, on the edge of the courthouse circle and said, you're going to have to leave. You're go, we're going to take this building down because Paula has a dream. And Paula's dream is for it to be a gathering area, a water feature, a place where Pittsburgh can come together and be the special community that it is. And so Paula, I think that this award, in many respects, is your, your award as well. And, but Greg, if you'd join me up here, let's read the resolution in recognition of Gregory Stafford as Pittsburgh's 2022 North Carolina Main Street Champion. Whereas Gregory Stafford is an active supporter of the Pittsburgh Main Street Program, serving as a member of the Downtown Advisory Board and is Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee. And whereas making profound improvements in downtown Pittsburgh, Gregory Stafford has steadily renovated a total of five downtown properties, creating positive economic change for the Pittsburgh community. And whereas Gregory Stafford is well-known by his cheerful, laid-back demeanor, and his willingness to spare no effort to better downtown Pittsburgh, helping to cultivate a vibrant and thriving community. Whereas the town of Pittsburgh recognizes his efforts, hard work, and dedication, which have been instrumental to the revitalization of downtown Pittsburgh. And whereas each year, the North Carolina Main Street and Rural Planning Center, a function of the North Carolina Department of Commerce, recognizes the efforts of dedicated individuals who have contributed to the success of local Main Street programs across the state. And whereas Gregory Stafford was welcomed within the ranks of Main Street Champions across the state of North Carolina, receiving this distinct honor at the 2023 Annual Main Street Conference held in Statesville, North Carolina in March of 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for the town of Pittsburgh recognizes Gregory Stafford's exceptional, exceptionally valuable contributions through his vision, leadership, and action, and is proud to call Gregory Stafford our 2022 Main Street Champion. Adopted this the 27th day of March, 2023, is there a motion to put this resolution upon the record?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This was great pleasure.
Thank you.
I don't know, with the board, I know that the board of the Downtown Advisory Committee is here to help celebrate you as well. So Theresa, do you want to introduce the, the members of the, of the board?
We have Debbie Hamilton. We have Heather Johnson, Dylan Carey, and Robin.
Thank you. All right, this is a time now to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, or a motion to modify the agenda?
Motion to approve, as indicated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Kyle Ship. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. It's my pleasure to ask Kent Jackson to give us a manager update in his capacity as interim manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So yeah, a couple of things to update the board. So staff is looking forward to the board's budget workshop and retreat coming up on Thursday, April 6. We're working on the agenda, and I hope to have that to you later in this week. On Thursday, this coming Thursday, myself and Bob Hagaman will be meeting with our counterparts from Sanford and Chatham Park to discuss our regional utilities projects. But we're looking forward to that discussion on this Thursday. And then on the staff level, thanks to Jennifer Eeks, our HR Director, we are moving forward with interviews for the vacant planning director position. In fact, those will begin, the first one, I think, is this Friday. So we're looking forward to those and moving forward with filling the planning director role.
Very good, thank you. I just wanted to go over a few things that, that had been, since our last meeting. Kent and I met with department heads on the 16th to advise them of the elevation of Kent to the position of interim manager, and, and to also announce the hiring of Jonathan Franklin as our final manager, who will be with us in May, I believe. On the 15th of March, I did a, a panel discussion with another person who had served as mayor, this woman has served as mayor of, of Rockville, Maryland. And she and I did a panel discussion with, at Women of Farrington to talk about women in roles of politics and, and government. The, I think every year so far, I have been at a budget retreat or something on the Saturday of AgFest. I was delighted to come out and be a part of that this past, this past Saturday. And, and then Tuesday, the 21st of March, I attended the Burlington City Council Meeting and spoke during their public comment period. Spoke about the water and spoke about their lack of, of responsiveness to our concerns downstream on water quality. So those are my updates for the, for the week. Pamela Baldwin, Mayor Pro Tem.
No, I do not have any updates, thank you very much.
Commissioner Bonnetz has left us. He was with us with the, with the work session, but Commissioner Farrell?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Ship?
Sure. In regards to the regionalization and the merger utility projects, we did have a meeting with Sanford, March 16. Appreciate Jay coming down for that, so good, good progress there on the, the governance side of that regionalization. For EDC, we had a meeting last week, I believe. And, you know, I think a lot of people heard the news about Vinfast, and, you know, so maybe they didn't do the best job messaging that, but everything is still full speed ahead with Vinfast, maybe on a more realistic timeline these days. So still, still moving forward there with the Vinfast project. And then we did talk about how this area is beginning to known, becoming known for business and basketball with the success of the basketball teams in the area. So I, just kind of a note, I appreciate Kent, the, the board look ahead that you sent us of, you know, meetings going forward and the status updates, stuff that's really helpful for us, so appreciate doing that.
Commissioner Voez?
On March 16, I attended a Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting. And then on March 21, I was able to listen to the PFAS Strategic Community Engagement Call through Zoom.
Thank you. I also note that I, on the 20th of March, I attended a, a grand opening of the, well, not grand opening, a grand shoveling, I guess, of the dirt at the new location of the Fidelity Bank and on East Street. And I'm going to be attending upcoming the Home Builders Association Meeting on Housing Issues. It goes Wednesday evening through Thursday during the day, in which the main speaker is going to be the fellow with Strong Towns. And I think we all, I don't know if anybody else is able to go, but are you going? Okay, great.
Chuck Mahone.
Yes. And, and it so happens, and I'm sorry that John Bonnetz isn't on with us, but, but John talked about this very, this very person when we were doing job interviews for the, for the manager's job, and, and saw this as a very vital and important initiative, Strong Towns. So this now is a time for public comment, and I don't believe anybody has signed up. So we'll move next to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to be made for approval of the entire consent agenda, which are items one through eight?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Ship.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Voez. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That the motion carries unanimously. And is there a motion to open public hearing for the Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh system development fees?
Motion to ocean, open the public hearing for the town of Pittsburgh System Development Fees.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Voez. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So Kent Jackson, we invite you to open this particular section of discussion on the system development fees.
Okay, yeah, sure, thank you, Mayor. So this hearing is complimentary to the hearing that we had back on March 13 for the system development fee analysis report and study. Staff wanted to clarify through an additional hearing that the board is also considering the adoption of an updated system development fee in addition to the approval and acceptance of the analysis and study. Staff does not have additional information to provide to the board this evening. However, we would like to receive any additional public comment and answer any questions you might have.
And we do have someone signed up for speaking during this public hearing, and it is Chris Rowley. Thank you, Chris. I hope I didn't murder your name.
You were suploced. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name's Chris Rowley. I work for Polty Home Company. At Polty Homes, we represent three different home building brands, Polty Homes, Centex Homes, and Del Webb. We currently own property in Pittsburgh, and we're also under contract to purchase more property in Pittsburgh in the, in the near future. And I certainly understand and support the need for system development fees. You know, that's, that's part of the development world that, that we live in. But I do want to emphasize that fees like this will ultimately get passed on to the end user, which would be the person who's purchasing a home. So imagine what it's going to do to affordability when these fees get implemented, especially when we're talking about numbers that are tens of thousands of dollars. And, and how will that impact certain people's ability to come to Pittsburgh, who will no longer be able to afford to be here? I want to be, I want to make sure it's known that if these fees go into place at some of the rates that we've been hearing about, and have come out of the count, out of the consultants' reports, it will definitely negatively impact housing in Pittsburgh. We love Pittsburgh, we love being in Pittsburgh, we look forward to doing many more projects in Pittsburgh. My request is that you look at all the fees of the neighboring areas, which I know that you've been doing, and that you pick fee rates that are below what others are doing, so that we can maintain our, being competitive in Pittsburgh, and that we continue to bring the folks here that are excited to be a part of this community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And by the way, do you all build affordable housing?
Yes, we do. Yeah, so we build affordable housing, we build homes, we have a very large range. The Del Webb brand that we do is for folks who are 55 and older. And when we get into that demographic, especially, we find a lot of our buyers are on fixed incomes. And so raising fees, tens of thousands of dollars, will definitely price some of them out of the market and being able to come, be a part of our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers that wish to speak that failed to sign up for the public hearing? Ken, is there anything else that we need to address?
I don't think so, Mayor. So ensuing on our earlier discussion, we'll be, you know, today waiting a process to, to bring a fee for consideration by the board at a future meeting.
Very good. Therefore, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, just, just to clarify that further for anybody that wasn't aware, we did a work session for an hour prior to this meeting. That'll be available online, specifically about system development fees. And I, and then I'll make a motion.
Okay, very good. So the motion by Commissioner Ship to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Voez. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no old business tonight, but under new business, our first item, Molly Boyle. We look forward to hearing from you on the preliminary plat for Chatham Park Section 7.1.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? Well, did I share my screen? Good. Right, let me just pull up my PowerPoint here and we'll get started. Molly Boyle, Planning Project Manager. I'll be presenting the staff analysis for this item tonight. I'll go through the technical bits, and then we'll open up the floor for questions. We have the applicant here, and also on the call, we have Chuck Smith and Robin Rose here. And Robbie Odom and Gareth Abbott are on Zoom call. So this is a major subdivision preliminary plat because it proposes more than five lots, and it's in Section 7.1 of Chatham Park. So therefore, it's subject to the master plan and additional elements, and also the North Village Small Area Plan. The parcels proposed for subdivision are 7101 and 60745. I'll show you a vicinity map in a minute that shows you where those parcels are located in town. And the applicants proposing to subdivide about 33 acres to create 70 single-family lots, and the median lot area is about 6,600 square feet. So here's the vicinity map, the project area is outlined and read here. You have Subtle, Subtles Road along the Southern Boundary, 15501 here. You'll recognize this R10 block over here as the Malot property. And up here, sort of off the screen to the north, is where Mosaic is. So in terms of utilities, the applicants requesting water service from the town of Pittsburgh and wastewater service would be provided via the Chatham Park Water Recovery Center. For open space and parkland, based on the number of lots proposed, the applicants required to provide 2.8 acres of parkland and .7 acres of open space. They're providing more than enough open space, 6.8 acres, which equates to about 20% of the phase. And they're proposing the 2.8 acres of parkland offsite. And also Chatham Park right now is currently in surplus of parkland. So meaning that they've set aside more parkland than they need to based on the number of lots they've developed so far. For access and parking, the project has access to Grant Drive and Subtles Road, both public roads. So you remember the Unified Development Ordinance requires that for subdivisions, more than 50 lots, there have to be two points of access for the subdivision, for that emergency access. So this does meet that requirement. The internal subdivision roads, they're going to be 27-foot wide travelways within 55-foot rights away. And each lot is going to have two parking spaces on the lot as required by the parking element for Chatham Park. Staff has also reviewed the proposal for consistency with Pittsburgh's various long-range plans. So that's the comprehensive transportation plan, the bicycle and pedestrian plan, and also the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And we found it to be consistent with all of those. And with that, we'll go ahead and take any questions you have, either for staff or for the applicant.
Questions from Molly or the applicant?
I just, the, the section that's shown for future development here, that's the school site, correct? The elementary school site?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Good. And then it's more general than just this, but kind of becoming increasingly concerned about parking and parking on streets, and the parking is available in, in neighborhoods. It's a, you know, concern for bike lanes, which we've done something about.
Right.
It's a enforcement problem for us, rather than for the developer. And then also I've heard from Chief Griffin also about the, the public safety requirements there. So understand this meets all the requirements, that's fine. But I think it's something that we need to continue to look at, that there's, there's adequate parking that's, that's usable for the residents.
Sure, okay, yeah, and that's definitely something we can look at too, at the construction drawing phase. Because that's something that we've talked about with Kent before in the past, particularly off of Vine Parkway. I know we've had trouble with the bike lanes, so definitely something for consideration.
And I think off of Vine Parkway on the smaller roads for fire.
Yes, Daryl and I have talked as well.
Sure, good.
Additional questions? Is there a motion?
I got a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ship.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Molly. And next we'll hear from Morgan Dewitt on item number two of new business. Leaf, Golden Leaf Flood Mitigation Program Grant Opportunity.
Good evening. Yeah, we're bringing a resolution to the board tonight to submit an application for the construction of a, for a culvert replacement under Pittsburgh Elementary School Road. As I'm sure you're all aware, the culvert was damaged during Hurricane Matthew, I believe, several years ago. Since then, we've received another grant and completed the final design and estimate of the project. And now we're trying to obtain funding to install the infrastructure as part of the construction project.
And I'll add, thank you, Morgan. I'll add, Mayor, we are also pursuing through a different grant program for improvements on Oakwood Drive. Think I may have inadvertently identified this as that project previously, but this project, as Morgan has stated, is for Pittsburgh Elementary School Road. But we will have another resolution for board consideration for Oakwood Drive at a future meeting.
And Kent or Morgan, I know this was a quote unquote emergency repair that's in place now. Is that, is it holding up? Or I know for how quickly it was built, it seems to be doing well, but.
I mean, it's holding. I don't recall offhand how much it's been tested, so to speak. Certainly, that is, you know, that is part of our consideration for pursuing this through grants is the fact that it is serving the, you know, primary purpose currently. So Morgan, do you have anything to add?
I think Kent pretty much covered it. I'm not aware of the details of the emergency repair, but I do know that the engineering, the design that we have is a larger culvert to adequately be able to convey the water if we were to get another larger storm event like we did previously with the hurricane.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
So the motion that we would need was to authorize the interim town manager to execute and file an application to the Golden Leaf Foundation. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Janie Helps will work with us now on Minimum Housing Enforcement at 238 Russell Chapel Road. Is that the correct address?
Yes, that's correct. And I apologize for the wrong address, but it's been correct now.
Okay, great.
Okay. So the request is to start the, not necessarily start enforcement, but to reach out to the property owners. This property is in the ETJ. Last year, I had the neighboring owner come to our department and ask about if anything could be done or what could be done. And so as time has gone on, he has still stayed in contact with us. And because this is in the ETJ, in with 160D, minimum housing still does apply. But just because it isn't within town limits, we wanted to bring it to you all to make sure you're comfortable with us moving forward. It'll start with just contacting the property owner, and it may remedy itself, and we won't have to do any further action. But in case it doesn't, we wanted the approval from you all to move forward in case that happens. Dennis Pennix from SCEI is also on the call. That's who we have our code enforcement contract with. So if you have any questions, I or he can answer them.
All right. Other questions?
Is this address correct? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Was it still 189?
No, 238. Carrie sent out a little, a later update.
Any questions for either Dennis or Janie?
Have we tried to contact the existing homeowner or the existing property owner?
No, not yet, because it's in the ETJ. So just in case, we didn't want to contact them and kind of go back and forth and then have to come later on when it might be kind of farther down the line. So now it's kind of, we want to make sure that you're all okay with it so we can contact them. And like I said, it may remedy itself. But if it doesn't, then we already have that approval or that kind of blessing to move forward to get it cleaned up.
Okay, okay. I was just curious about the process. I think we might, we've had success before with just contact. So I was curious if that had happened yet in this case.
Not yet, but it will this week if you're all okay with it.
Okay. I'm okay with you contacting anyone and then coming to us for action if needed. But and then this is coming to us because it's in the ETJ, but I assume we are moving forward with enforcement of other properties that burned long ago in the city limits, for example.
I don't know of any. So if you know of some, then you can share them.
All right, I will.
Okay.
Again.
All right. Is there a motion to approve of SCEI moving forward with the enforcement at 238 Russell Chapel Road?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin, seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And yes.
Could I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
When did this property burn? Do you know?
From when I was contacted, it was about July of last year, from what I understand.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Janie will stay with us for the preliminary plat subdivision for Northwood Phase 3. So Janie, what do we have on that?
Sure. This is part of the Northwood subdivision, and it's Phase 3 of the development. And they're proposing to subdivide parcel, pull it up, 6723 into 10 lots. There will still be some remainder of the property. They don't currently have sewer allocation, but this is also just a preliminary plat. And we also review site plans, so that's part of our site plan review is to make sure that they have the sewer and water allocation. So that will go through the review at this time, at that time. And right now, it's just to split the property up. We do have Mitch Craig is on the call, in case you have any questions that I might not be able to answer.
So does the board have questions for either Janie or Mitch Craig? So this is a simple subdivision without any, without site plan review. And that's when the sewer issue will come on. That's correct. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve or deny the request?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Motion.
Northwood, MUPD.
Motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. There's no miscellaneous matters on the agenda tonight. And there is no closed session. But sometimes, as a meeting will go through, the board may develop additional concerns or questions that they may need to ask before we ask for a motion to close the meeting. Is there anything still on the minds of the board? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ship, seconded by.
For consistency purposes, I believe it has to be Commissioner Vos.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion.